The call the meeting to order here, the Community College District 511 Committee, the whole meeting on September the 10th, 5:15 in the P A I room. Do we have a roll call, please?
Gorski.
Why, yes.
Nelson.
Here.
Gudea.
Here.
Kennedy, yes. Michaels.
Present.
Simpson.
Here.
Soltow.
Here.
Trojan.
Here. Do we need a motion to have a member in attendance by means other than physical presence?
So moved.
Second.
Have a second? Motion Nelson, Simpson second. Roll call, please.
Gorski.
Uh, yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Gudea.
Yes.
Kennedy, yes. Michaels.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Soltow. Trojan.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Any communications or petitions or public comment?
No communications, petitions, or public comments.
Any visitors to be recognized?
No visitors to be recognized.
Review of the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting, August 13th. Any comments, questions on the minutes as presented? This is not a vote, but at least any comments you have will be recorded. Hearing none. We'll move on to the general presentations, the first of which is the Higher Learning Commission's Visit Training for the Board.
Good evening, trustees, and thank you for taking the time tonight to discuss preparation for the Higher Learning Commission's visit in October. In your packet, you receive some excerpts from the Higher Learning Commission's 2024 Resource Guide. Dr. Mayling and I tried to pull some things out that we thought would be most relevant in preparation. I'm not going to go through that handout with you because I know you can study that yourselves. But what I want to do tonight is provide some more detailed information about, well, what does this mean for you? So what can you expect between now and the Higher Learning Commission's visit on October 14th and 15th? What can you expect the day of that visit? And some questions that the visiting team might ask of trustees? And then what to expect following the visit? First, what to expect between now and the site visit. Our assurance argument will be locked and submitted on next Monday, September 16th. And that includes the response to the five criteria. The criteria are available to you in that resource guide, but I also know we've talked about them through our regular updates about the Higher Learning Commission. And it also includes a federal compliance document. All of those materials will be available on our public website within a week after submission, and those would also then be available to trustees. And obviously, the site visit team will have them at that time when the argument is locked. As you may recall, Dr. Lisa Mayling is retiring at the end of this month, so we're experiencing a transition in the accreditation liaison officer, which is why I'm here presenting to you tonight. As of her retirement, I will be the A L O for the college and then welcoming the site visit team in October.
Hello.
Hello, Joe.
Attorney Trust, Attorney Grakowski.
All right, do I have Attorney Grakowski and Trustee Soltow on the conference call?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, I'm here, too.
Perfect. We'll have Heather V P Snyder continue with the presentation.
Thank you. Between now and October 14th and 15th, we'll just continue to prepare the campus community, including faculty, staff, students, and the Board of Trustees. So what can you as a trustee do to prepare for the visit? You can review the materials that were provided to you in tonight's packet. That includes the criteria for accreditation and assumed practices. Also, the standard pathway cycle, which is our 10-year cycle of reaffirmation for accreditation, that has also been shared in the regular quarterly updates from time to time. There's information in there about what we include in federal compliance, and also what the outcomes of the visit could be, what the options are, and also some other general obligations of our membership. You can read the assurance argument. As I mentioned, that will be available to you sometime between the 16th and 23rd. And you can, there'll be executive summaries of our strengths, challenges, and actions so that you can be familiar with those key points.
The 15th, 23rd of September?
Yes, correct.
Could you let us know when it is available so we know precisely?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So then what to expect when the H L C visiting team is here? We've sent them a tentative agenda, and we're awaiting their approval of that agenda, but I can tell you which groups they'll likely want to meet with. There'll be several committee meetings and large group meetings, and of course, an open forum for the campus. The team will want to meet with the president and his cabinet, the H L C steering committee, which can describe the process that we've went through since 2020 to prepare the assurance argument and prepare for the visit. The visiting team will want to meet with members of academic affairs. The focus really is about our credit programs when we talk about accreditation, even though we offer many other wonderful programs for our community. They will talk with individuals in student affairs, institutional research, likely the enrollment management team, human resources, the chief financial officer and financial services, the foundation staff and board members, so we'll work with Brittany to coordinate that meeting, the registrar, curriculum committee, and assessment committee. And then the large group meetings will be open to, there'll be one for all faculty, one for all staff, and one for all students. We'll have a meeting with community members. Dr. Spearman and Ms. Kirwitz and I are working on a list of community members that we'll invite to talk about the college and answer questions. And of course, what you're most interested in is the meeting with the Board of Trustees. As we've mentioned before, that'll occur on Tuesday, October 15th, the time likely 7:30 to 8:45. As soon as we have the agenda confirmed from the site visit team, we'll confirm that with you. Breakfast will be served during that meeting, so please R S V P to Ann so that we can plan accordingly for that. I hope you'll all be able to join us. There may be other meetings held at the same time. So the site visit team includes five individuals. Many of them have community college experience. All of them have higher education experience and experience with the Higher Learning Commission. But they'll be able to split up the five individuals so that they, you know, they can't all do everything. So some of them will focus on various criteria. So I imagine maybe two or three will meet with the Board of Trustees while a few meet with another constituent group. And I just want you to be prepared for that. So we'll likely have the meetings in the Educational Resource Center, this building on the third floor. And if there's another, if you see other people around, it's not because they're trying to come to your meeting. So just be prepared for that. The meeting will be convened and then adjourned to closed session, which is what we've done in the past, so that you can feel the ability to be transparent and open and honest with the Higher Learning Commission. So the purpose of the meeting with the Board of Trustees is for the team to validate what is written in the assurance argument. It would be probably a worst-case scenario if a college, and we did not do this, had one or two individuals write an assurance argument without collaboration with the campus and transparency. So they're looking to validate from all the different constituent groups what's written in the report so that it's really true, so they can make a decision about reaffirmation. They'll be especially focused, when it comes to trustees, on criteria two and five, and maybe a bit of one. Criterion two, integrity, ethical, and responsible conduct is important when it comes to trustees because that is the criteria that talks about our policies and procedures for operations, and whether that they're upheld ethically and with integrity. Criterion five is important for trustees because it is about institutional effectiveness, resources, and planning. So they'll be looking to see that the board is aware of our strategic plans and success towards those plans. Also, that we're effectively using resources, and that the board has sufficient authority over resources. Now, remember, when the H L C talks about resources, don't just think about financial resources. Think about human resources and facilities as well. They're really looking at all of our resources to offer education. And possibly, they'll want to know, they'll talk to you about criterion one, which is about the mission, and they'll be looking to verify that our mission is publicly available and that our work is aligned with the mission of the college. The site visit team will want to assure the appropriateness of board authority. Specifically, does the board exercise authority over policy and fiduciary matters? And delegate authority of the day-to-day operations to the president and the administration. I've heard board members talk about this, so I know that you're aware of the difference between the board and the college administration. It's nothing that should surprise you. Dr. Spearman, Dr. Mayling, Ann and I met with the team lead, and he specifically said that's what they're looking to talk about or looking for. And they want transparency. The site visit team will do this through a series of interview questions.
For what?
Oh, they'll be doing, they'll be assuring that the board operates and the college operates in the appropriate way through a series of questions. So think of it like, almost like a job interview. I can't tell you exactly what questions they're going to ask, but I can tell you the types of questions or example questions, and you can be prepared to respond to those. Yes.
I presume all the trustees will be in the same meeting, or is it one-on-one?
All the trustees will be in the same meeting.
We're asking, we're hoping all the trustees can make it to the meeting to the breakfast.
Yes.
Yes, sir, Paul.
And right now, I can't, not that time of day. So I'm trying to reschedule, but I can't make it then. I can make it later in the day, but I can't make it in the morning.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is share some potential questions with you, and I don't want to tell you, I'm not going to tell you how to answer them because they'll be looking for your perspective, and that's what's important. But I do want to remind you of a few components that I know that are aligned with the questions, so that sometimes, you know, you don't want to be caught off guard, and I kind of know what they're looking for, so I can give you suggestions of things to reflect on. They might ask you what you know about accreditation, and if you have seen or read the assurance argument. Remember, we've had quarterly updates, and monthly committee of the whole meetings, various items are labeled strategic plan updates or labeled H L C updates, so you have had regular information about the Higher Learning Commission and accreditation. And also, remember, it was part of our decennial committee process, so we studied in depth how the Higher Learning Commission criteria hold us accountable. Obviously, you will have access to the assurance argument. If they did ask you how you would describe Rock Valley College's mission, describe the mission and where it's located, it is located on the About page of our website, and I think it's on the back of all of your nameplates right now. So if you need a cheat sheet, remember that. Empowering community through lifelong learning. They won't ask you to recite it, but just generally know how the work of the college contributes to lifelong learning. They may ask about the current strategic planning priorities. I know you've had regular strategic plan updates. You've seen our scorecard. You have the regular state of the college each year in January. Those might be things you want to refresh on, or at least know that those are elements that help you to understand the mission. The R V C Downtown West Project is one of the biggest initiatives I think you might want to mention in alignment with access and exceptional education and training. They'll likely ask you about our strengths and our challenges. I know from hearing all of you talk that you think our academic programs are strong. I know you think that our career technical education is strong. I hear you talk about Starlight Theater as a strong aspect. I'm not at all worried about you being able to come up with strengths of Rock Valley College, but just reflect on that. When it comes to challenges, if you want to think back to the state of the college again, some of our major challenges have been demographic shifts, enrollment declines because of demographic shifts, educational attainment in the region, and having to serve students who need to advance their educational attainment, and we also have a lot of underserved populations. We've had one challenge I'd say that they will probably want to talk about is the Board Policy Manual, and we'll be talking about that later tonight. But I think it's okay for us to share those challenges as long as we have solutions. But I think it's okay for us to share those challenges as long as we have solutions, and I think we do. So being transparent is important, but always, I just keep going back to that job interview analogy. Like, if someone asked you what your greatest weakness is or what your greatest challenge might be in a job, you would try to turn it into a positive. We all know that, so, or at least say how you're working on it. What makes Rock Valley unique among our peers? Well, they should know how community colleges work and that we have districts and so that we're unique in the way that we are the only college in this district that offers certificates and associate's degrees that are accredited, but also that we have an affordable cost. I think if we compare ourselves to other options for students in this region, that makes us unique. And also, our adult education and non-credit opportunities are unique. Again, they'll be looking for evidence related to academic or credit programs, but it's okay to share our successes or things that you're excited about that are not on the credit side. They might ask about your impression of the campus culture. You could talk about our campus climate survey. I know many of you were excited to hear the results of that and see that we had improvements in every, every item, every category, year over year, but I think you were, you were, at least appeared so interested to me that you wanted to be included in that climate survey yourselves, and you wanted to know what the campus community thought about the Board of Trustees, and you analyzed those results as well. So that's a positive. Now, some specific questions that they might ask trustees, those were some general questions they might ask anyone. What is the agenda and the materials used in the orientation? So they're going to ask about your board orientation, potentially ask about your board orientation and your training. So I know that you have board training with ACCT. I know that you do, in years one, three, and five, you have four hours of ethics trainings. Those are the types of things they're looking for. It's not just that you're elected and then all of a sudden thrown into the Board of Trustees. I know from, at least when trustee Simpson started, she wanted to meet with the various vice presidents, and that opportunity is available as well to learn more about the college as you're beginning. How has the Board enhanced Rock Valley's ability to fulfill its mission? And how has the Board assisted in generating resources needed to sustain and improve the institution? While you select and evaluate the president, I know that you care about his goals in evaluating those goals and helping him to set the course for the college. Your voting records help support our mission initiatives and also our resources. Approving the budget, that is one thing the Higher Learning Commission is considering assumed practice, that a Board of Trustees will annually approve the college's budget. Allowing us to go out for bonds to support our building of the RVC Downtown campus is a huge way to show that you are supportive and generating resources. Working with the CFO, and I think that the decisions you've made on the operating fund balance and how to keep a certain percentage of operating fund balance are extremely important as well. Are there clearly defined expectations and protocols for trustee obligations and communications with each other, the president, employees, and community members? So who's responsible for what? I remember we did the board retreat with the ACCT training, and I, part of that was to talk about how we communicate with each other and the board chairs communicating with the president, and then the chairs communicating with the board, the cabinets communicating with the president, so we kind of set some standards with that. You have regular meetings with your liaisons, and I know you're good stewards of the college that you're serving, but also of the taxpayer dollars and the community that you're serving. Again, they'll be looking to see that you have responsibility for fiduciary and policy decisions and that the president has authority over the day-to-day operations. How are records or resource allocation decisions communicated to the community? We've made some improvements recently with how we communicate your decisions, so we have now, tonight and every night, that we have a board meeting, it's streaming, to make it more available. People will know the decisions that you make if they want to pay attention, but also, we do a recap for our internal community. Each day after the regular board meeting, we send out in the daily news a recap of how things were voted on and the leadership and Board of Trustees' comments. And you know that everything's available on the website, everything's very transparent. You might be asked about resource challenges. Remember, they're talking about financial resources, human resources, and facilities. Capital improvements might be a challenge, but I think that's mainly because we have to make, we have to set priorities. We can't do everything we want to do, so we have to make decisions. I've heard trustees comment on personnel reports and turnover and the ability to attract talent to the college based on our region, but I think we've tried to correct some of that with the compensation study, so your support of that compensation study and those changes has been helpful. This is my last question, I promise. Does the Board periodically and objectively assess its effectiveness and the effectiveness of Rock Valley's governance structure? So think of the governance structure, you can think of your own governance structure and that we have an elected Board of Trustees and that you reorganize each April and assume specific responsibilities among yourselves and have liaisons to the college. You can think about the structure of our meetings. For those of us who have been around a while, we used to have several committee meetings, and now we've decided to move to a committee of the whole so that everybody has the opportunity to study materials and ask questions before voting, and that seems to have been a choice to be more efficient and better use of everybody's time. You also have authority, you approve the personnel report, so hiring of administration and that structure as well. Are there any, I'm just, the only thing I have left is what to expect after the site visit, but I want to pause if there are any questions or concerns?
No, but I would say it's a very nice trustee handy-dandy guideline for us. I hope I remember it all.
Well, I thought, I could follow up.
It makes some very good points.
I could follow up with, I could send you written copies of the questions.
That would be nice, because you've kind of nailed quite a lot of them, and, you know, it'd be worth for all of us to remember.
I have a question.
Yes.
Maybe you mentioned it, and maybe I didn't hear it. When you mentioned that there's going to be a meeting also with the community members, are we looking for specific community members? I mean, are we looking to speak with parents, professionals, the union people? I mean, what, is there a certain criteria for the community members we're looking to make sure we connect with?
Yeah, we're looking for some strong community partners, and we've already made a list and generated some ideas of people who we should include in that.
They will be specifically invited, then?
Correct. It won't be like an open call out to the community, but we'll be inviting people who work with us and partner with us on various initiatives.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The final thing I wanted to go over is what you should expect after the site visit. So that Tuesday, after they meet with the trustees, they meet with the community. On Monday, they will have met with all of the other groups. There will be an exit discussion with the president and the liaison, myself, to basically provide just some general feedback. They don't give you the outcome that day, so don't expect that we would tell you that Tuesday if we've been reaffirmed or not. The site visit team stays in town through Wednesday, and they work on their report. So they only spend about a day and a half with us and then another day and a half with each other to start writing their report to us. And then that peer review team is, they make a recommendation. They don't make a decision. They make a recommendation to the HLC decision-making bodies, specifically the Institutional Actions Council. The earliest IAC meeting after our visit is scheduled for November 18th and 19th, so I do not expect to have any decision until after that. So what might we expect? I would, the possible outcomes, they'll take a look at, each criteria has subcomponent, or core components underneath. They'll let us know if we've met, met with concerns, or not met each of the subcomponents. Met with concerns is generally a sign that they're going to provide us with some sort of recommendation and maybe a monitoring report. In order to meet a criterion, so one of the five, you have to have met all of the components underneath it. So we, the outcome will likely either be a reaffirmation of accreditation or a reaffirmation with some monitoring. And in the past 10 years, we've received monitoring on things like assessment, strategic planning, and our conflict of interest policy or compliance with our own policy. Now, the length of time that we have to respond to any of that monitoring will kind of depend on the severity or the topic. So we had, I think, about a year to respond to the monitoring on assessment, for example, but the ethics compliance was much shorter because it was something that could be fixed in a shorter period of time. I don't expect, I mean, the bad outcomes of, you know, not being reaffirmed or having some severe adverse actions, I don't expect any of that. If we have monitoring, we've had it before, it's not uncommon, especially in the area of assessment, we'll continue to work and improve and respond to that.
Yes, sir, Paul.
Thank you. We'd have to have a major fail not to get, we're looking at reaffirmation and/or reaffirmation with some tweaks.
Correct. I don't, yeah, I don't expect any major fail, and I don't expect, you know, it's almost, if we had failed to do something five years ago and we are still not working towards improving that, I mean, that would be shame on us and there would be a reason for fail. But they're going to look at whether or not we've made improvements and are working towards things that we've recognized as needing improvement.
Yeah, I mean, because, I mean, the financials are good, we're moving ahead with capital projects, we're moving ahead with enrollment, you have good enrollment. I mean, I, I mean, there may be tweaks, but I can't see a complete thumbs down, I mean, but, so, okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Heather? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It looks like a very, as well, very intensive review coming up, so I guess we all got to be sharp.
Yes.
Thank you.
Got to be on our toes.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather, very good. Thank you.
Our next general presentation is from Rock Valley College Foundation. Brittany Freiberg, the Chief Development Officer. Welcome, Brittany.
Hi, Brittany. Good evening, trustees. Thank you for giving me a few moments of your time to share a foundation update with So my first slide, I want to just highlight our current scholarship awarding period for this academic year. So you can see, we have received, according to that slide, so there's an asterisk there, the day I had to turn it in, our Last Chance Scholarship window had not yet closed. It closed that night, right at midnight. So the number that you see, the 681 total applications for this year is now 707. So we did have a few come in at the last minute, and you can see there that we now typically do two awarding periods each year. So we do what we call the best chance, and that is in February to April. And that is our biggest push of the year. We promote it widely. We want to try to get every student, current student, incoming student, to get them, bring them awareness of the application period. You can see there that we had 547 applications come through. In this last round, that number has jumped up to 139. So again, now we are at 686 for total applications. When we look at how many recipients we've awarded this year, we were able to award 320 within best chance. I do not unfortunately have a last chance number because we are in the process of awarding those right now. So when looking at our best chance results, we had 547 applications, which resulted in 320 preliminary awards that were offered. You can see there, it totaled over $526,000, and we were able to award 53% of the students who applied with a scholarship. In a perfect world, that number would be 100%, but we'll work toward that. When looking at the funds available this year, I'm pleased to report, you can see the comparison there between last year at $706,000, we had almost $800,000 available to award this year, so over a $90,000 increase year to year. And again, we were able to award $526,000. We had $271,000 remaining in last chance, so that's why we opened it back up. The last thing I want is for donor dollars to sit when there might be students that maybe weren't aware of the best chance opportunity. So we opened it back up for about two weeks of a window, and we are hoping to award as much as possible. So I do believe we will definitely surpass the amount of funding we were able to give away last year. Next, I just want to highlight the growth of the allocations that we have available to award year after year. So you can see, we started around 2011, awarding roughly $134,000 a year, and it kind of crept year to year, and then you can see some significant changes and increases over the years. So to see that growth from... I know in your last meeting, you did discuss our total investments, so all the assets that the foundation holds. So I did do a comparison just to kind of break us out amongst our peers, so you can see us highlighted there. We're in slot number nine when compared to 33 of our Illinois Community College peers. Again, we're looking at total assets held by the foundation. So we're sitting there at $17.89 million, and that brings us up to the top 27% of our Illinois Community College peers. I also know that there were questions on where some of our endowments are held, and so I've broken it out there. The majority of our funds are held at Sumat Capital Management. We've been there since 2004. We have six different accounts that they hold for us. It's a mixture of endowed and non-endowed funds. We have a charitable remainder annuity that is held at Midland State's Bank that has also been there since 2004. And then we have a pretty significant amount of money that's held by the Community Foundation of Northern Illinois. Those funds came in during our Engineering Our Future campaign. The Community Foundation approached us, said we will match dollar-for-dollar up to $1.5 million if you can raise that, and so we did. And so there, you can see funds that they hold for us and have matched. And then before I close, I just want to, just make an invitation to you all, when we talk about growth and how do we grow over the years, so much of what I do and my team does is reliant on building relationships, and it's building connections, and we, we feel like we do a pretty good job of discovering those potential donors on our own, but our connections only go so far. And so for my board and for you as trustees and stakeholders, I just invite you to share any contacts that you have with us, especially when we're looking at building Downtown West. Who do you know in your circles of influences that are passionate about education, they're passionate about reaching areas that are historically underserved, undereducated? We know there's a ton of potential over, throughout our region that maybe just doesn't have access, and we're going to deliver that access. So who do you know that would light up with the opportunity to be able to support that campaign? So I just ask you to consider creating a list. If you want to send me a list via email, my email's there. I will always reach out to you first before I talk to anyone that is connected to you, just to make sure what's the best way to approach them. Will you help open that door for me? Sometimes when I call, cold call and Sam with the foundation right away, they're like, uh-oh, here she comes, she's asking for money. And I am, unapologetically, but if I can have someone like you who they trust, they know that you care about the college, you care about our students, if you can open that door for me warmly, then they tend to trust me a little bit more and know what my motivation is. And my motivation is obviously to advance our students and advance our college. So again, if you'd like to help us grow, I welcome those leads from you. I would love to work with all of you individually on that. And then I also just want to share, there are some of you who, again, do support scholarships, and I just want to give, plant that seed, that I would love a named scholarship representing every trustee that we have. It could be in your name, it could be in honor of your family, but I welcome you to consider maybe what that looks like for you, if you'd like to leave a named legacy in honor in commemorating your service to the college. We do have endowed scholarship opportunities. They do start at a minimum of $10,000, but they're payable over five years, so there's years there to kind of build that up. I know it's not a secret, it was in the magazine, so I know trustee Trojan has a few of those scholarships and can probably speak on the personal... scholarships and can probably speak on the personal side of what that donor experience feels like, that, what it feels like to see your recipient and shake their hand and hear their thank you, and then see them go on and succeed in our community. So those are my updates. If anyone has any questions.
Yes, sir, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brittany, what, when I first got on the board, I asked what our endowment was, and I was told it was 200. And I was like, I was stunned. I said, 200 million? No, they said 200,000. And so maybe that was inaccurate because that was in 2017, but in that perspective, the 17 million is, is great, but have, have we raised that money recently, or how did we get to that number?
Sure. So that's a great question. We have been, I've been told not to say busy, say productive.
They have to apply for it. I mean, you just can't just hand it out, so.
So I will say, I do feel like we have increased our efforts because I am very passionate about that. I never want to have to go to a donor and say, I don't have a student for you this year. You're not going to have a student at our luncheon seated with you. So we have started a partner really closely with Student Services, with Inter-Cultural Student Services, with our student clubs. So anytime there's an event where students are gathering, like a community resources event, welcome back event, we have a booth. We have something there. It is an easy, excuse me, a postcard with a QR code. We try to make it really easy. When we look at, we have a lot of engineering scholarship money. When we look at those pools and aviation, where there's a significant amount of money, one member of our team is in, trying to be in those classrooms. So best chance, Linda Berger, our Scholarship Operations Manager, she was in every single aviation maintenance class. She stayed there an entire day and presented to all of them, and we had a good, good rate of return on that. Some of our challenges can be that some of the criteria is just too specific, and so, and the donor is no longer living. When we have, there's an economic scholarship, for example. So we always work with the faculty, but sometimes we just cannot find a student who meets the criteria that can apply. But anything that is not that specific, we are out. If there's music scholarships that are going unawarded, we're contacting the faculty, we're contacting the dean. And everyone is very open to working with us, so we'll see how the numbers shake out. I'm really hoping this year that we award almost all of the funds, but we're definitely out there.
Okay. Thank you.
I can make a comment, circling back on your comments, asking the trustees to present contacts that they may know of, and I'm sure your board has asked the same thing, but years ago, when Gloria Lundin was in charge of the Community Foundation, I was on the board. And one of the requirements that she insisted on was exactly that. And what she would do is have a monthly, or sometimes twice a month, lunch with Gloria. And it was simply bringing in a person, of course, they had luncheon facilities there, they could cook up salads and whatever. But anyway, it was a low-key introduction to the Community Foundation. This is what we do. We're not asking for money now, but in the event, you know, down the road, please think of us. And they, she would explain various ways where the money would be spent. And by golly, they, over a long time, have raised a lot of money, and the last I looked, it was well over $100 million. And it was because of things like that.
Right.
Because sometime a person would die, and he was exposed to it two years ago, and he would have left, he would leave a big, big pile of money.
Right.
So again, I would encourage everybody on the board to think of people that might be potential donors and give it to Brittany so she could follow up. And that'll create some more enthusiasm, I think.
Right. Mm-hmm. I like that suggestion. Thank you.
Any other comments?
If I had friends, I would do that, but I don't have any friends, and all my family's passing late are increasingly high rates, so if I acquire any more friends, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Brittany. Good job.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is, we're on to teaching and learning? Yes, enrollment update.
I'm going to turn it over to Heather Snyder. Thank you.
Oh, by the way, I like this thing. It's kind of the hard rock look, right?
Yeah. We just need some fire and some people dancing from the ceiling, and we'll have it all.
Yeah, well, it'd be a good thing to talk to HLC. We, our chair equated, you know, made us the equal of a gambling casino in town. No, we're not, we're not gambling here, Bob.
It was just coincidental because we were there last week or week before, right? Brand opening?
No showgirls.
That's okay. All right. Please go ahead.
Well, we're at the point in the enrollment cycle where there isn't much difference between what was submitted in the packet and what I have from today's enrollment. We're actually 103% to budget as of today, and still 99% to the E-stretch goal. We did lock in our enrollment earlier this week, and we're working on our submissions to ICCB. So in October, you'll receive the official 14th day enrollment report and the student profile. And soon after that, ICCB will probably be releasing their own enrollment reports for the fall that has some comparison information as well.
So far, so good.
So far, so good. Yes. Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
If not, next item?
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Dual-incredited memorandum for District 205, and a running start for 205, the long-awaited documents.
Yeah.
Good evening, trustees. Let me preface this by saying that this is the last group of IGs I'll be bringing to you. It is from RPS 205. You were presented with the dual and articulated credit agreement for them. We left the running start IG on there thinking we would have gotten it before the packets went out. We only received that signed agreement today at 3:45 PM. So you'll get it to review before you vote on it at the Board of Trustees meeting. It was beyond our control.
Are there any changes to either of the documents?
No.
No?
Nope.
Any changes in the number of students that might be in each program?
No.
No? Okay. Okay. Any questions for Dr. Kennedy? If not, we'll move on to finance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ellen tells me there's no purchase reports because we're not spending any more money. No. The purchases have fallen under a threshold that we, the board has approved for. We don't need to go through a purchase report. But Ellen is here to present the cash and investment report.
Indeed. This is probably the shortest presentation I have. Notes regarding the cash and investment report. Operating cash and investments did decline $12.8 million from July 31st. This is due to the $11.4 million that was transferred from operating to the CDB trust account for Capital Project 810-080-22, which is CL2. So as a reminder, that the CL2 project was approved in April of 2024 by the board. The operating funds transferred will be reimbursed when we issue the bonds under the reimbursement resolution approved by the board in July. Capital funds increased $12.7 million due to the amount transferred for the CL2 project. The college also received $1.1 million approximately in tax receipts from the counties for debt service. So even after the transfer for the CBD, CDB trust account, total operating cash and investments is at 80.02% of operating budget, which is still a strong number for the college. I also want to take a moment to remind the board that at the October board meeting, there will be a bond issuance notification hearing, so the public will have an opportunity to provide written or oral testimony with respect to the issuance of the bonds, which are expected to close in November. Are there any questions?
Yes, sir, Paul.
I'd just like to repeat for the body and anybody watching online, the, the transfer dollars that you mentioned was discussed, reviewed, and board voted on and approved previously.
Correct.
You're just executing a previously authorized board action.
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ellen.
Thank you.
Moving on to operations, trustee Kennedy.
Rick Jinx will present the operations report.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Good evening, board. The first item on the, on my list is the personnel report. As you can see, we have, we have one appointment. It is the Director of Environmental Health and Safety. That position will start effective September 25th, 2024, and we have one departure. Chuck Secot is going to retire, longtime faculty member here at the college who will be missed. Any questions?
No.
I will now turn it over to my colleague, Terrica Huntley.
For the fiscal year 2024 annual personnel report, we're going to move that to next month due to some data discrepancies, so we're going to hold off on that. However, VP Huntley will be able to speak to board policy manual.
Good evening, trustees.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to discuss with you our board policy manual review. Today, we will be focusing on Article One. As you are aware, the board policy manual was fully implemented in 2014. From this time, we have had individual policies that have been reviewed and updated, but the entire board policy manual has not been. And so we are taking this time to be able to review and update this manual. Part of the updates, we want to make sure that we are considering that we align with state and federal precedents, ICCB guidelines, accrediting bodies, our current practices and operating procedures, and the needs of the college overall. And so those are things we are considering in our review. With regard to the process, over the next year, we are looking to review the entire manual, and there is a three-layer step process. The first step in the review process is that attorneys from Robin Schwartz perform an initial review just to make sure that all legal precedents have been updated. The second layer of this is that myself, in addition to Ms. Anne Kerwitz from the President's Office, review it to make sure that we have institutional congruity. And then after we have done both of those things, the third layer is to be able to bring those changes to the board for a first and second reading to make sure that we are in compliance with the board policy. I'd like to take the time now just to be able to review for you a couple of the changes that have been made for your consideration, and you have those before you. One of those changes is looking at grammatical and proofreading adjustments, and so we wanted to make sure that alignment of margins were updated, that we were standardizing font styles and sizes. If there were any spelling errors, we were correcting those things. And then with our language, that we're using consistent language. So there is an interchangeable use of board members and trustees, and that is explained. Also, we want to apply consistent use of inclusive language, whereas previously there was reference his and hers, we added his, hers, and theirs, so that in our efforts to increase diversity, equity, and inclusion, we are being inclusive in our language. And then finally, we use closed sessions instead of closed meetings. We have one board meeting, and we have a closed session within that meeting when appropriate. And so that has been updated as part of those adjustments as well. I would also like to point out that two specific areas where we have made updates, with regard to vacancies, there has been an adjustment that ICCB has updated, just to make sure that we are in compliance with if there is ever a vacancy on the Board of Trustees. The board has 60 days to be able to appoint someone, and if after those 60 days, then it's reported to ICCB, and ICCB may make that appointment. And so if you look at number five, number five has the updated language that ICCB has presented to us in their language. Yes, sir?
And paragraph three, I think there's a word election. I think it should be elected.
Thank you. We'll take note of that and make sure that's corrected.
Also, apologize for the small print, but you have electronic versions as well where you can click on it and zoom out so you can see, see it better.
That's what I did.
All right. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I will continue on if there are no further questions right now. With regard to regular meeting agenda, we have provided an update to make sure that all of the components that are within our board meetings are considered there. There were some terms that were outdated as far as what we're using, and so these are now reflective of our current board meetings. Keep in mind that if there are items that are to be taken off of that, we do have the flexibility to be able to do so. For example, if there's not a closed session, then the closed session would be taken off of there, but it is included amongst this list as an opportunity for us to be able to address within board meetings.
Yes, sir, Paul.
This is the first reading. There's a, is our next meeting considered the second reading?
October.
October, so next month.
And then the vote?
Would have had at the earliest, October, the second reading.
So you consider the, the presentation at that meeting the second reading, and then you're going to vote right?
Presentation of community to hold, and then first reading would be the September board meeting. Then we'll have an opportunity to discuss if you, if there are public comments or board comments.
We'll be able to do that in October, Committee of the Whole. And then we would have an opportunity to vote at the October.
Oh, meeting. Okay. Very good.
So a two-month process.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that question. And then on our next slide, we're just identifying next steps. And so we are conducting our primary reading within this month and secondary reading in October, as has been previously stated. And this is in accordance with our Board Policy Manual. And then we will begin reviewing Board Policy Manual, Article 2, which is operations, with consultation once again primarily with our attorneys from Robin Schwartz and then with appropriate RVC cabinet members that have oversight or leadership in those areas, just to make sure that we are ensuring institutional congruence. Are there any additional questions?
Any other questions? John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I notice that A, these are board policies, and B, we have eight distinguished board members. Probably should have another one, a representative of the faculty on the board. But this just falls down to Robin Schwartz, you, and Anne. There was no board members that worked with you on these policies?
We've conducted the primary review, and the goal is to present this to you so that you have the opportunity to review. And if you have any concerns or changes, that you have that opportunity within these timeframes.
And so there would be certainly no complaint from the administration if changes were made by the board then, right?
If changes are made by the board, then administration will go back, look at them, also share them with the attorney, make sure it's still congruent, and then we'll bring it back to the board for a vote. But yeah.
I think that's the reason why you have a review before you vote on it.
So let's say, yes. So let's say.
If I might.
Continue, John.
A lot of these things go on, and of course, you are an ex officio member of any committee that functions, as I understand it, throughout the college. But something that, like board policies, which, by the way, the President told me that's where, that's the board's prerogative is board policies. It just seems to me that somebody from the board ought to be in on the ground floor. That's my thought.
Paul, you had a question?
It was more, I apologize for, when I asked about the first and the second reading and the vote, it was a little bit vague. The reason was because I just wanted to make sure that the board members knew that we had an extended period of time to review it. And I would suggest if you had any questions, to forward them up through Chair Trojan, and we'll forward them onto the, I mean, and then, you know, a few days before this doesn't give me enough time to really take a look at, but this is only the first reading, so we've got time before the second reading, before the second vote actually, or the vote to actually kind of review it and run questions by. So, but I would encourage that we get those questions to Bob soon, as he requested before previously, so there would be time to actually consider them before any vote in October.
John?
This is just a question about what the report, what our packet says. Are the policies in the packet, are they the new ones or the old ones? Because, of course, in the packet, you can barely read where the changes were made. So I want to make sure that the larger print isn't the old policy, it's the new one?
Sure. So you were provided with access to this presentation, which gave you a snapshot, but then you were also provided with a redlined version that should give you access to the old, the old board policy with the proposed changes, so that you could see what changes were made that were redlined.
My question is, is this right in this packet? Is this the new board policy or the old one? And the attorney is nodding his head that it's the new one. Am I right about that?
Yes.
Okay. That's my question.
Thank you.
You have questions?
Also, in an ideal world, we have a first reading and a second reading. In the Committee of the Whole, if there are changes to be made, or you're recommending changes aboard, then my recommendation is that we don't move forward with the second reading. We take an extra month or take the time to make sure it's based on what we, we always do a legal review and then make sure it's consistent with board policy, and then we'll bring it back in November or December. There's no rush. We just, this is our policy, first reading, second reading, but if there are changes to be made, we'll hold off and we'll make those changes and then come back to you in a future month.
So procedurally, it seems to me that we have a first reading, and every trustee should read the first reading. And if he or she has any comments, they should send them in to Dr. Spearman, who in turn will go with the administration and legal. And if they agree or disagree, then they'll come back with those changes if needed. But it'll be up to the trustees to look at each of the changes and respond back. If there's no response, we assume that you've approved that first draft, so when it comes time to vote, it's bang. Is that procedurally the way to work, the way it should work? Now, if we don't need another meeting, just read it and give your comments if you have any.
Bob, what if there are changes proposed and there's dispute?
The administration and legal will review, and if there are legitimate changes, I presume they'll come back to us with the revised.
Well, Bob, we determine whether or not they're legitimate. That's the thing.
Well, regardless, we're bringing them. Your policies, you're recommending them, then we will review them, and we're going to bring them back to the Committee of the Whole so that everybody understands that. That's, we have to do that before you go and vote on it, and you don't know the changes or we haven't shared the changes.
Bring them back.
So we'll share, we'll share your recommendations.
Kristen, you had a comment?
Well, I'm just curious, can, is there any way, do we have to wait until the Committee of the Whole? Like, if you're updating and you, you know, you come up with the changes and you do some things, you could give it to us maybe sooner than we get everything on Friday? That way, we have a little more time to, just, then it would just speed up the processes, my thoughts. You know, like, if you get something done ahead of time, why not just share it and then we could, no? I mean, I'm just, just.
Well, it's not that, it's not, it's just the process, and it's not that we have to necessarily speed it up, but let's say you make a.
I was saying, like, if he's wanting more access to it, that's all I was just thinking. You know, if he wants more beforehand, I mean, I think it's all good. It's good that we're getting it taken care of. I just thought if, by chance, on Monday, you finish something that's not going to be looked at until November, why not share it? Or, you know, ahead of time. Then it would just, then you've got more time to look at it.
Right. Well, I think I understand what you said.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, let's move on to the next topic.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Which is intergovernmental storage agreement with the City of Love's Park for the firetruck.
Yes, thank you, Board. This agreement, if you recall, the Rock Valley College was offered a 1993 fire pump, or, excuse me, pumper fire truck from the Harlem Roscoe Fire District, and we accepted that donation to the college in April. Since then, we've been working with the City of Love's Park to come up with a place to store it. The fire, the pumper has water inside of it, so it needs to be stored inside a location that's heated. We've been having multiple conversations with the City of Love's Park, and they graciously allowed us to store the, our fire truck at their fire station directly north of the college, free of charge, so that we can have it inside, and it will actually be in a, an enclosed, secure environment. And this agreement will be for five years, and there will be no cost extended or any fees to Rock Valley College for this.
Yes, sir. John?
Well, I'm just curious. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious, I assume they gave us the truck with the idea that they'd get rid of it. So it's very nice of them to take it for five years, and what a story.
You too.
We didn't get the truck from Love's Park. We got the truck from Harlem Roscoe.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So different, different fire district, but yeah.
Well, then it's even more nice.
Yeah. Yeah, it was very nice of them.
Cooperation. Paul?
Any insurance concerns or costs or anything? They're just going to.
No. Our truck will be insured, and they'll be, they're insuring their building, we're insuring our truck.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then obviously, five years, so are we assuming that they're going to accept the renewal every five years, or is it just, or we have to find a new place every five years, or what's that?
Typically, they put expiration dates on these things, but with a clause that says it can be extended. So I see no reason why in five years it won't be extended for another five, and then in five years, it'll be extended for another five.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. That's typically how it goes.
Okay. Unless something happens, Bob.
Right.
Nothing.
Anything else? No. Next item then, the Classroom Building 2 update. You're on a roll.
Yeah, the Classroom Building 2 update. This will just be verbal. They did, this is, again, is for the CDB project, Capital Board, for those who don't know who, what CDB is. They did meet, and they interviewed four architect firms. Only one was local. They have met and are in the process of deciding this week. We were supposed to know yesterday, but this is CDB, so we will find out shortly who they have chosen to be the architect firm for the project.
You know who they are? I mean, you know who they are?
I know who one of them is.
Okay.
I know the local one, is all I can say, but I can't say who it is.
Okay. All right.
So I just want to give you an update on that.
And then next item, change order update?
The next item is the change orders. So this is one of those change orders you like to bring. This is for the Student Center Flooring Construction Project. Basically, we use no contingency money, so this is a positive or negative change order, depending on if you're doing it in accounting or normal way. But this is money coming back to us that will be put back into the O3 fund so that it can be used for other projects. So we did not expense any, any change orders for that project. Any questions?
Any questions? Do you have a calendar?
Yes, sir.
We, what happened to the flooring? We just didn't put new in, or we did something else, or we kept under budget? Why are we doing this?
Well, the original project was to replace all the old carpeting in the Student Center, and then we had a contingency in case we ran into issues. The project went very smoothly. We ran into no issues, so the carpet was, they moved all the furniture, pulled up all the carpet, put down the new carpet, put the furniture back, all three floors over three and a half months, and everything went smoothly.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
You're welcome.
Rick, Nick?
Then the final item is obviously the facilities. There's a lot of things on there because we're obviously at the beginning of the semester. There's a homecoming week coming up, September 23rd through the 26th. There's some Shakespeare performances that will be done at the BST. So there's quite a bit of things that are coming up. If you have an opportunity to come out to the college and see one of these, I strongly recommend it.
Tell us a little bit about the 60th anniversary celebration on October the 10th. It's open to everybody, is it?
Yes. Yes.
It's, October 10th is our 60th year anniversary celebration, and we will be in the front lawn area of the Student Center. And yes, please come out. It's open to the community and all employees, RVC family. And we also will have a separate event in the spring, in April as well. But going back to October, Brittany will be speaking to it as well as part of the alumni retirement celebration. We'll also be addressing the 60th year anniversary. So between the two events, we ask that you attend both of them, if possible.
The alumni one is October 7th.
Seventeenth.
Chance to bring your friends that may be potential donors. Yes, sir. John?
I see the 10-1 of '24 at 5:00 PM. That's a meeting for us, right? Essentially?
What's the name of the, I didn't.
It says ICCTA Northwest Region.
So.
ATC, 5:00 PM.
Yes, so for the, I was going to speak to it under unfinished business, but I'll speak to it now. That is the ICTA, or the Illinois Community Trustee Association Northwest Regional Meeting. It will be held Tuesday, October 1st, 5:00 PM at the Advanced Technology Center. Right now, our agenda would include ATC tour, a dinner, legislative update from the Executive Director of ICTA, which is Jim Reed, and then they typically expect us to do some form of a trustee discussion. We haven't discussed that topic yet, so the, between you and the chair.
At the meeting, I might get some ideas there. It's Friday.
Oh, good. Yeah, that'd be great to bring some of that back on what trustees in the region may be thinking about. And then, once we have that topic, we'll ask the trustees that are there, we'll probably have you partner with a cabinet member, and you guys can lead those discussions at each table. And then we'll have a, at the end of that discussion, we'll have somebody speak to the takeaways at the end of the night, and we'll do a closing remarks, keep it brief, and go home. All right?
So several of these that can be invited, that trustees are invited to, so we should take advantage where we can.
And then what I'm asking is that you are its VP through Anne, your attendance for these events.
Nico?
I had a quick question, like, BST stage, where's that at?
Oh, the BST? That's short for the Ben Stolstrom Theater.
Okay.
Do you know where Lot 1 is?
Yeah.
Okay, you know, so you kind of know where Lot 1 is in the Student Center?
Yeah.
Okay, if you look off to your right, when you're standing in Lot 1, in the Student Center, it's over here, it's off to the south, and it's got a silver roof on it that opens, and that's the Ben Stolstrom Theater. It's our outdoor theater.
Starlight.
Star, it's, yeah, it's called Starlight.
But you'll see the signage of BST right in front of Starlight by the sidewalk.
Okay. Okay. I was a little confused. And then what is Mole Day on October 23rd? Yeah, I mean, I was a little confused.
Oh, Mole, I think that's for chemistry, right? Yeah. It's a chemistry thing. I, I don't know.
Me neither. I don't.
It's like pie day.
Yeah, it's like pie.
It's a geek tape.
It's a thing. I, I'm not a science person. Sorry.
Any other comment?
Me? I have a question.
Any other?
I do.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, for September 26th, what is IEEE? Rock River Valley Section Monthly Meeting? I mean, I don't, I don't recall what those letters are for.
I would have to find out for you, trustee.
Oh, okay.
I'm not, I don't have all of these. I don't know all of these off the top of my head. I'm sorry. I apologize.
It looks like it's a community meeting that's happening on campus.
Yeah.
Just like they're having one of their monthly meetings on campus.
Electrical engineers.
Yeah. You did that on purpose. IEE would be electrical or engineers.
Okay. Anything else? Any, okay, thank you very much.
Wait, wait, no, I just, sorry. It's just that I saw that there were two retiree events, luncheons. There's, there's one on October 7th and another one October 17th. And so do we have that many retirees, or, because I'll be going to both for lunch, but I was just curious.
It's the same thing, so I'm assuming one of them is.
It's type O.
Okay. No biggie, just checking.
Brittany?
Sorry, I feel, I was supposed to update you. I don't know about the 7th, on the 7th. One of the 17th is ours, and that's alumni retirees at the college and local donors, like consecutive year donors. So what we're doing, it's the direction that usually comes to, but because it's 60th anniversary celebration, we're moving it to lunch. And we're going to do presidential update and then trivia, then major trivia, RVC through the eras, so.
Ah, okay.
We'd love to have all of you, please bring friends with us.
So for the sake of being recorded, that wasn't really in the microphone, but what you were confirming is that October seventeenth is the R V C alumni and retiree lunch, luncheon at eleven-thirty, correct? And we need to confirm, we, this may be a misprint for October seventh. If it is, we'll remove that.
Yeah, we'll get it removed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any comments? If not, we'll move on, thank you very much, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
To other business, unfinished or new?
We're going to start with unfinished. Just remind you with the H L C visit, please, R V P to Anne, that you'll participate in the breakfast from seven-thirty to eight-forty-five. And thank you, trustee Gorski, for sharing that at this point in time you will not be there. And remember, this is considered a special meeting, so it's a board meeting that we will be having. And just, I know it'll break your heart, but I will not be a part of that meeting, not be a part of me, it'll be trustees, and I'll be in a different meeting during that time, more than likely with the H L C committee. Alright, then, my new business is that we, we, Rock Valley College hosted a webinar at the request of the State Historical Preservation Office. Communication had an opportunity to provide feedback regarding the demolition of the downtown buildings. We received communication from two community members and two written communications from two legislators. All communication received what's in favor of the demolition of the buildings. And next steps include attorneys finalizing the M O A between R V C and the State Historical Preservation Office. The M O A truly just lays out our mitigation measures to capture the history of the buildings. And in capturing those, the history of the buildings, we'll make sure that history is located on the, on the property of the downtown castle, or west campus. And with that, that concludes my updates.
Okay, any questions? If not, could we have a motion to adjourn the closed session, please? Mr. Kennedy?
Go ahead and read it. Adjourn the closed session to discuss, one, the acquisition, purchase, or lease of real property for the use of public body per section two C five. And/or two, litigation has been filed and is pending or in action as probable or imminent per section two C eleven, all in accordance with the Illinois Openers' Meanie Act.
I motion.
Second.
I think motion was by Kennedy, and second would be...
Nico?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Gorski.
No, no, I think you're confusing my voice with Paul's, I'm...
Oh, please, don't do him, that disservice.
Yeah, not that old, no offense.
Gorski?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Kennedy, yes. Michaels?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Sotow? Trojan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carried. Thank you.
We will take a break and proceed to the floor. We will take a break and proceed to the floor.